I don't know why it's telling me that all of a sudden. It never used to. Could you hear that lady saying that, that it's being recorded?
Yes.
The little pop-up box came up on my screen.
I've never used to do that before. I'm sure I hit something. Okay, so we'll just go in line. So I will start with Danielle.
Um, gee, wait. Okay. Uh, could I do dosage for 300?
Ooh, okay. A patient has been receiving normal saline IV fluids at 100 mL per hour. He has-
Yes, this they'll say this meeting is being recorded on my screen, so I can't see any-
You have to hit continue.
Um, a patient has been receiving normal saline IV fluids at 100 mL per hour. He has an-
It's still up there. We can't see with that thing in the middle of the question. You guys have to hit continue on your screen.
Yeah.
Because it's like a screen blocking the question.
Well, yeah, you have to hit okay or continue and then it'll go away.
Where it says this meeting is being recorded.
Yes, that part. And then it says, okay, continue. You click that and then you'll continue and see the screen. That's what I had to do. Raven, stop.
Did you fix it, Tazra?
It's on your screen, Ms. Davis, not our screen. We all can't see the question for Jeopardy because something is on your screen saying that you-
It's on your screen, Taz.
Yes, on yours, babe.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay. A patient has been receiving normal saline IV fluids at 100 mL per hour. He has an NG tube with low intermittent suction and is NPO. This change in the patient's status should be immediately reported to the patient.
Physician?
I mean physician, huh, physician.
So I guess I'm confused on what the question's being asked.
So-
Sounds more like a statement.
Okay, so if we have a patient who is not taking in anything by mouth, they're getting IV fluids, we're suctioning something out of them, right? They have an NG tube. And what kind of changes in status could we see based upon what's going on with them? What kind of symptoms could we see?
Um, maybe, I feel like dry mouth isn't really a symptom, but I feel like you want to consider like mouth care if it's NPO because the fluids would be going in elsewhere. But I don't think I'm quite understanding this question.
Okay.
This question may be asking about electrolyte imbalances?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So if we're, if we're doing suctioning on a patient, they're NPO, um, we're giving them a small amount of fluids, what are they at risk for if we're taking out, they're not taking anything in and we're removing a lot of volume?
Dehydration.
Right. So what kind of things could we see? What, what is something that they could present that we would want to immediately report to the physician?
We'd be confused.
Let's see. Yes, a decreased level of consciousness. Very good. All right. Let's see. Michelle.
Um, let's do homeostasis for 100.
So this is a movement of a solute in a solution across a semi-permeable membrane from an area of higher concentration to an area of lower concentration. What type of trans, what kind of movement is this?
Um, high to low is diffusion?
Yes, very good, Michelle. Good job. All right, Laura. I think you're muted. Laura, you're on mute.
Okay, sorry. Okay, um, let's do dosage for 400.
And this is not dosage. I don't know why she has this under here. Um, excessive amounts of water. Um, this is a condition that will cause excessive amounts of water to be excreted by the kidneys. A certain disease process. We talked about it. It's when it's an abnormal amount of water just keeps repeatedly getting excreted by the kidneys and it causes, it causes a particular, um, disease.
Is it DKA?
Not DKA, it is-
Is it SA?
Yeah, S A I D H. So you guys need to know what S I A D H is. It's when the kidneys keep, um, excreting large amounts of water. All right. Caitlin.
Um, I'll take home stasis for 200.
Passive movement of fluid across a membrane from an area of low concentration to an area of high concentration.
Um, is that, uh? That, asthema?
Yes. Good job. Very good. All right, Chanelle.
I guess I will acid base imbalance for 100.
All right, here we go. So we have to figure this out and then try and figure out what we are dealing with.
I would say respiratory acidosis.
Is that your, is that your final answer?
No.
Okay, what is the pH? Decreased, increased?
It's increased, so it's definitely al, acidosis. It's acidosis.
You're saying the answer is respiratory acidosis?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is there any compensation?
Yes, because the pH is within normal range.
Very good. Compensated respiratory acidosis. Good job. All right, Tazra.
Um, I'll try lab results for 200.
All right, so this, um, is produced by the hypothalamus and stored in the posterior pituitary gland. It is one of our compensatory mechanisms.
I can't even think of it.
It is-
Is it ADH?
Yeah, ADH. Very good. So you guys need to know that. All right. Um, Chanelle.
Um, I guess hypo for 100.
All right, so this is an electrolyte imbalance where you would see cardiac and seizure precautions implemented. When administering medication, if deep tendon reflexes are absent, you're going to hold the dose and notify the doctor. And then you want to teach about foods high in this electrolyte, green leafy vegetables, nuts and fruits.
Hmm.
So we know it's hypo. Um, so now we just have to figure out what electrolyte it is.
So with the deep tendon reflexes, I'm thinking calcium and I'm thinking magnesium, but I don't know which one.
Is it potassium?
Do you want to phone a friend?
It could be, it could be potassium because of the cardiac, MSA, hypokalemia.
It's not calemia. You were right. It's either between calcium or magnesium.
Hmm, is it hypomagnesium because of the leafy greens too?
Hypomagnesemia. So remember, what was that question saying? When the nurse is administering that medication, if deep tendon reflexes are absent, make sure that you hold that dose and you notify the doctor. Okay? All right, um, good job. Cindy.
I'm gonna do lab results for 100.
All right. Let's see what this one is.
So the pH is normal. The PaCO2 is 69, so that is acidosis 36. It's abnormal too. So is it? 22, 36, let me see, 22, 26, so that about 10, 45. Okay, so respiratory acidosis with compos, composition, compensation?
Let's see. Yes, very good, Cindy. Good job. All right. Um, Nicole. You're muted.
You also said 400.
All right. A patient admitted with a DBT, started on heparin IV. The order reads to administer 1,800 units per hour. The 250 mL heparin IV bag contains 25,000 units. For what rate would you set the IV pump?
I don't have it.
Okay, 18?
I was about to say 18.
Let's see what we got. 18, very good.
Oh.
Yep. So for this problem, how do we want to set this up?
1,800 over 25,000.
1,000.
Times-
Times 250. Yep.
I set it up that way, but I felt like that was too high.
No, 18 mL is a very normal rate for a heparin.
Okay.
All right. Let's see. Love Line.
Um, lab result, 300.
Okay, this is a normal levels for a certain electrolyte. What is, what electrolyte has a normal level of 3.5 to 5.1, or it could even be 5.3, just it depends on what- The what?
Potassium.
Potassium it is. Very good. Good job. All right, Chazoma. All right. This type of transport solute move against a concentration gradient and in order for it to happen, you have to utilize ATP. So it needs energy to make it happen. You're going against a concentration gradient. What type of movement is this? It is active transport. Yes, very good. All right, Heather.
Um, I'll try hyper for 100.
Okay, so we could administer half-normal saline as prescribed for a certain type of electrolyte disorder. What type of electrolyte disorder could we give 0.5? I'll give you a clue. Hyper.
So that's like the half, half of the normal dose or not, or regular dose, right?
Half-normal saline, yeah.
Normal saline, okay.
Um, what type of fluid is half-normal?
Hypertonics.
Yeah.
Hypertonics.
Yeah, that's going to be hypotonic, right? Lower saline.
Does everyone agree with that?
Is it hyper?
It's hypertonic.
Hypo, right?
Yep. So what type of a condition could we treat with that fluid? Hyper what?
So you, too much of something.
What's that something?
Um-
Valemia?
I'm gonna say hypercalemia.
It is hypernatremia.
Oh, I couldn't think of that word. Okay.
For a patient that has hypernatremia, you would want to give them half-normal saline.
Because that's too much salt.
Yeah, so I'm not, yeah, and I'm not gonna, the question is not going to say your patient has hypernatremia. The, the question is going to give you the signs and symptoms of hypernatremia. So you have to, one, um, read the question and be able to say what condition this patient has, what electrolyte disturbance, and then from there on, then decide what type of fluid you would give, okay? Just so you guys know.
Ms. Davis, so is it, oh, I'm sorry. Is it hypertonic or hypotonic?
So where is our slides? We can take a look at our slides. What do you guys-
Mine was hyper, but I just want to make sure.
I was hypotonic?
Solution? Hold on.
I thought that was hypotonic.
It is.
It is. It's less salt because you have too much salt already in the body, so you're watering the salt down literally by giving it a half a salt solution.
I just wanted to make sure.
The 0.9, um, is isotonic? Or is that-
0.9, zero, okay, so 0.9 is isotonic. Right. Hypotonic is going to be your 0.45.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
Your hypertonic is going to be your, anything that's more concentrated than your plasma. So these are all your, like your D10W's, your D5W's. Um, you can have D5 and normal saline, D5 and lactated ringers. Those are all going to be your hypertonic, your isotonic, those are going to be your, um, you could use lactated ringers, you could do, um, just your normal saline 0.9, okay? And then your hypos, those are always going to be less concentrated than your plasma. So that's going to be 0.45, um, and then also your 5% dextrose as an example.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
But the 5% dextrose is not hypotonic until it goes into the system, right?
D5 is going to be hypotonic inside the bag, not inside the patient.
Right, okay.
Mm-hmm. All right, let's see. Renee.
I'll, can I just do acid base imbalance for 200? I have to write these down.
That's okay. Take your time.
So the pH is off, and so, so it'd be, well, they're all off, so it'd be partially compensated, um, metabolic acidosis?
Yes, very good. Good job. Good job. All right, Monica.
Homeostasis for 400.
All right. The, the following on the screen are causes of a certain condition, so vomiting, diarrhea, burns, large draining wounds, um, extremes of age, unconsciousness, motor limitations, um, sometimes surgery causes it, too many diuretics. Um, it happens when patients have nothing by mouth, um, if we give them excessive hypertonic enemas, if we're doing a lot of nasogastric suctioning, um, clients that present with these symptoms, the nurse expects this complication. So what can happen to a patient when they're vomiting and diarrhea and they have a lot of diarrhea or we're doing, or we're pulling a lot of fluid off of them?
Dehydration.
Yep, dehydration. Yep, very good.
I was look, I was about to say like between alkalosis and acidosis, it wasn't even that deep.
Oh, well, that's the thing about nursing school. We make you, you know, we overlook the little things because we're always having to, you know, to think so deep about things and, you know, such critical thinking. All right, Basola.
Can I do for 500?
Say it one more, homeostasis, you said?
Do dosage for 500.
Okay. This condition would cause a rapid bounding pulse and shortness of breath. What kind of conditions would we see that would cause a rapid bounding pulse? So a rapid bounding pulse is significant of what? What's happening in the body that's causing our pulse to be so rapid? It's our heart that's beating, right? So we're tachycardic. What kind of conditions could cause us to be, um, to have tachycardia and shortness of breath when we're talking about fluid issues?
What the question saying?
Would it be fluid overload?
Um, hypovolemia? Hypovolemia.
Hypervolemia, yep, hypervolemia. Very good. All right, Kelsey.
Um, can I do lab results for 400?
A patient has lost three units of blood during a traumatic amputation of the left leg. The nurse knows this type of fluid volume deficit results in which of the following effects? So what is it, if we're losing a lot of blood, what is that going to have a direct impact on?
Low blood pressure?
Right, but what is actually, what causes our blood pressure? It's our what?
Is it like, heart, just the heart, like-
What's the heart doing?
Working and resting, working versus resting?
So it's our circulating blood volume. So whenever we lose blood, we lose our circulating blood volume. Okay. Ashley.
I'll do hyper for 200.
Okay. Signs and symptoms of this certain electrolyte abnormality, um, we would see in patients that have a diagnosis of a very high fever and severe dehydration. What electrolyte imbalance could they have?
I'm just gonna say quickly, hypercalemia.
Hypernatremia. So any patient that has severe sweating, um, and they have that high fever, they're losing a lot of fluid. So when all that fluid comes out, all that's left behind is that solute, is that sodium. So those, that sodium is going to be extremely high. Okay?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
So that one, I would think of hyperchloremia. Aren't those the same, wouldn't that be the same symptoms?
Um, well, specifically, I was talking about the fever.
Oh, okay, so what would be the fever?
Right.
Okay.
With the, I mean, they do tend to follow each other, but really the, the big take home that I want you guys to think is about sodium.
Okay.
When you see patients that have those symptoms.
Okay.
All right, Samantha.
Let's do- What do I want to do? Hypo for 200.
Okay, so when checking for this electrolyte imbalance, a troso, a troso sign and a trvostek sign are assessed when checking for this particular electrolyte imbalance.
Can we help?
Here.
Hypocalcemia? Both are signs.
Yep, very good. Hypocalcemia. All right, Kelsey.
Uh, me again or the, is the other Kelsey here?
Oh, Kelsey, the other Kelsey, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
Can you skip me for a minute? My whole screen just might create, I'm sorry.
Yes. Amy?
Lab results, 500.
Okay. A dehydrated, a dehydrated patient is receiving IV fluids of, um, D5, half, oh, don't look at that. Ha, of D5 half-normal running at 125. What type of IV fluid is this?
Hypertonic.
I was like, if you get this wrong, Amy, you're in big trouble. Yes, hypertonic. All right, Alan.
Can you go back to that question just real quick? Sorry, sorry, Alan. Just real quick, I want to-
Which one was it?
Um, lab, uh, results, 500. I was just looking at the way that was written, but now I see it. Okay.
Okay. All right, Alan.
Yeah, acid base of 300.
I have a question too. I'm sorry, Alan.
Okay.
For a patient who is severely dehydrated, we wouldn't give them hypertonic solution, would we?
What type of a solution is a hypertonic solution? So if, it depends how far things have progressed. Normally, if they're dehydrated, we're going to give them a hypotonic fluid.
That's why it confused me, that's why I was asking.
Why? What did it say?
It says hypertonic.
So it just depends on how far it's progressed, and if there's been, where's the question again? Lab results? Okay, so what type of a fluid is D5? So, D5, so it depends, D5 half-normal, lactated ringers, normal saline, these can all be, that's like a very general type of fluid that you can use, because it's not going to cause any fluid to move either way, it's just going to increase your volume, which is what we want to do. So it's, it's just a normal go-to, you can always use this medication, because it's not going to cause any type of a fluid shift. You could be a little bit more technical and pick a different kind of one, but usually the go-to that we see in the hospital settings is usually an isotonic, because we, it can just bring your volume up, and it's not going to cause any shift. But you could also use this, depending on how much of a fluid shift you've had, and what's, what is left. But this is also considered a hypertonic solution. But the D5 and the normal saline are both also considered isotonic.
But together, it's a hypertonic, correct?
In that particular case, yes.
So that you could give.
Right, but you could just give D5, or you could just give 0.9, and sometimes we do see them combined together. I don't want to talk about that like that, the outliers that you see for different things, because I don't want you to get confused for testing purposes. So for testing purposes, just think of this as a hypertonic solution, okay? No? Yes? What are you thinking?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right, who did I call on? Alan? Did Alan go? I'm so confused.
Oh, I see this 300.
Okay, sorry. I did click on it, but now it's gone. Okay, here you go.
Okay, I got 7.50, cc acid, CO2, cc8, acid, HCO2, normal. Something acidosis.
So it is going to be acidosis, but where's the problem? Is it respiratory, or is it metabolic?
Metabolic.
Is your metabolic, what, what value is indicative of your metabolic system? So we always say that our PaCO2 is our respiratory system, right? Our bicarb, our HCO3 is going to be our metabolic system. So in this case, our HCO3 is completely normal, so we know it's not a metabolic issue. It's a respiratory issue, because our PaCO2 is off. So it is a respiratory acidosis. Is it uncompensated, partially compensated, compensated? What do you think? So it is actually uncompensated, because we don't, our pH has not gone back to normal yet, so it's uncompensated. We have two abnormals, so it's uncompensated. All right, Patricia?
Hyper for 300.
So in a patient, we will see this electrolyte abnormality if they had a diagnosis of bone cancer. So when we think of our bones, what do we think of?
Bone is calcium.
Calcium. So what is the abnormality going to be, hyper or hypo?
Bone cancer is going to be hype, oh.
It is actually hyper.
Oh, those on the hyper, duh.
Hypercalcemia.
Okay.
All right, Shabria?
Acid base imbalance for 400.
All right, there you go. What do you guys think?
Metabolic alkalosis.
Uncompensated.
Yes, very good, good job. You guys are doing so good on this acid base. I'm really proud of you guys.
It's the easiest part.
All right, um, Ryan?
I'll go for hypo for 400.
All right, the following listed on the screen are causes of a certain electrolyte imbalance, prolonged diuretic therapy, excessive burns, because we're, it's causing a large loss of the extracellular fluid, excessive diaphoresis, prolonged vomiting, diarrhea, NG tube suctioning, laxative abuse, and renal disease.
I feel like it's potassium, I think it's potassium.
It is hyponatremia. Yeah. They're pretty close. But you would see, you would see hypo to kalemia, but in this case, it's going to be the hyponatremia. All right.
Is it the sweating that makes the difference? Because I don't think I saw sweating with hypokalemia. Because I saw the, the vomiting and diarrhea, is it the sweating that gives it away kinda?
Well, when you have the excessive diaphoresis and the fever, yes, that's going to add that component, because you're losing that salt.
Okay.
Um, one question, is it hyponatremia because it said ECF, not ICF, not hypokalemia? Because kalemia is an ICF, right? Was that what made the difference too? Am I wrong?
Well, extra, potassium is extracellular, right?
Right. Okay, I just, all right, I was just going, okay.
Yep, so you guys definitely need to know what your, where your electrolytes are located, because questions like that can give you, help you narrow down your answers if you know what electrolytes are where, okay? Um, Maureen?
Acid, acid base imbalance for 500. So, this, um, respiratory, um, um, acidosis.
So it is respiratory. Look at it again to see if it's acidosis or alkalosis. So what is your PaCO2?
Oh, yeah, it's respiratory alkalosis.
Yes. Is it compensated, partial compensation, or uncompensated?
Hold on one second. It's uncompensated.
Very good, uncompensated respiratory acidosis. All right, DeShawna?
I'll try. Hypo for 300.
This electrolyte imbalance happens when a patient is taking high doses of ferrosemide, Lasix.
I'm going to guess, is it hypo?
Hypo.
Kalemia?
Yes, yep, yay, very good. Good job. All right. Who have I not called one? Um, Brianna?
Um, I guess I'll do the hyper for 400.
All right, these medications can cause a certain metabolic imbalance, angiotensin converting enzyme inhibitors, antibiotics, chemotherapy drugs, digoxin, and heparin.
I don't know.
Well, let's take a guess. What do you think it could be? Try and narrow it down. Just guess. Anybody want to help her out? What do you guys think? Hypokalemia, yep, good job. Good try, Brianna.
Hold up, I thought that was Addison disease.
Well, we haven't talked about Addison's disease.
Oh, it's not Addison disease and crush injuries and burns? Would that cause hypokalemia too? I think it was on one of the handouts that you gave us. I just want to make sure that, you know, that's, we could, that's part of it as well, versus the other Madison that you just named.
So, um, let's see. So right on your slide, so hypokalemia is when you take in too much potassium, when you're retaining potassium because of kidney issues, when you are excreting too much, or excessive, you know, we're giving somebody too much. It doesn't have anything to do with like, I mean, like crush injuries or anything like that.
Okay, because that's on one of the, I'm looking at the electrolyte study guide, and that's a cause by Addison disease, crush injuries, burns, renal failure, metabolic acidosis, excess potassium intake.
Okay, well, I didn't teach you guys yet that, so we're not going to go into that. We'll talk more about that when metabolism comes, because I don't want to confuse you guys. This question is just directly related to the medications. When we start talking about metabolism, we'll talk about Addison's disease, and then you'll be able to kind of like link all that together, but that's not going to be a test on, a test question. Okay. All right, Dina?
Homeostasis.
All right. Not an actual disease, but a symptom of a physiologic problem in which fluid intake or retention exceeds the body's needs.
Fluid overload.
Very good, good job. All right, um, Raven?
Dosage 200.
At 2200, you are performing a physical assessment on a patient with an IV of D5 ringers lactate, which has 324 mLs remaining. You note the IV is infusing at 45 mLs per hour. At what time will the IV bag be empty? Uh, 0232? Okay, so.
05.
Let's work this out together. Okay, so what's the first step? We know what time it is, it's 2200. Right now, there's 324 mLs in the bag, it's going at 45 mLs an hour. So the first thing we have to do is divide. So we want to see how much time it's going to take to get that 324 gone. So we divide the 45 into the 324, and we come up with 7.2. But we can't calculate what 7.2 hours is, so we have to take that point 2 and times it times 60, because there are 60 seconds in a minute. So when we multiply the, the point 2, times 60, we get 12. So then we can add that to what? You take that 12 and add it to what?
The 22.
Seven hours and.
Right.
Yes, add the some plus 22.
So 512, yeah.
Yeah, 512, I got 520, because I ain't multiplied it.
Yes, you have to always multiply that, because you, what, have, you really, it would be very hard for you to figure out what point 2 of an hour is.
But what is 7.2? Isn't it, I always look at it like 7 hours and 20 minutes.
It's not.
So you can't do.
Seven, it's point 2 of an hour.
Okay.
Not 20 minutes. Yep, that's why the answer, well, that's, a lot of people make that mistake, it's kind of confusing. So you have to think of it as, what is 7.2? So what is point 2 of an hour? Well, we really can't do that unless we multiply it times 60.
So you divided the 45 into the 324?
Yep, because it's going at 45 mLs an hour, we have 324 mLs left. So we have to divide it to figure out how many more hours we have.
Okay, that's what we have.
So the 324 divided by the 45 gives you 7.2. We can't do anything with that point 2 until we multiply it times 60, and it becomes 12. So then we add it back to the 7, so now it's 712, and then we have to go 7 hours forward, and that's what time it'll be done. 512.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, let's see. Um, Martha Lynn?
Um, hyper, 500.
All right, metabolic conditions, hyperparathyroidism. All right. Metabolic conditions, hyperparathyroidism, renal tubule disorders, hypophosphatemia, and bone disorder cancers cause this. Electrolyte abnormality. We know it's a hyper, so what electrolyte is it? Hyper? Yes. Hypercalcemia. Good job. All right, Shay.
Okay, I'm ready. Last one.
All right. Signs and symptoms are of this electrolyte abnormality. It's going to be a hypoabnormality. You're going to see hyperactive deep tendon reflexes, muscle hypertonicity, and tetany. What do you think?
Hypocalemia.
So the answer, oh, where's my thing, is hypochloremia. Chloremia, so issues with your chloride. All right, so you guys really need to study your electrolytes. All the information that you need, we discussed tonight, and, no, not all of it, and it's on your slides. I made sure that everything I talked to you about that you're going to be tested on is on your slides. All right.
And actually about chloride before we move on real quick. I know chloride is like equal to sodium, right? So when the one is out, the other one's down, one down, the other one's up. But what actually do we use the chloride? Like, what you use it for? Like, say if that was the answer for the question, like. You get what I'm trying to ask?
No.
I really don't understand, like, what the chloride? I mean, I don't know. Like, I know what sodium is used for, and we don't have enough sodium, or you, you have too much sodium, but. I don't know example for chloride, if that makes sense.
So like, what does our body use it for, do you mean?
Yes, yes, like, what will be a size of symptoms really like for chloride, or you just look for anything that's dealing with sodium, since it's like the opposite.
So, yeah, well, yeah, so they're very closely related. So if you see a change in one, you're going to see a comparable change in the other. So the issues could be the same. So we see hypocaloremia with. Vomiting, diarrhea. A lot of sweating, burns, gastric surgeries, if we're doing NG suctioning, where we're pulling out a lot of. You know, stuff from the belly, if we have GI tubes, drainage, if we're giving diuretics, okay? So you won't really see. It's, we wouldn't think that there are signs of hypochloremia. You're going to think that there are signs of hyponatremia. But you're going to see them, hyperactive deep tendon reflexes, tetany. Okay. So they are comparable, so you could just use it as hyponatremia. All right, we have one more. This is my favorite subject in nursing school so far. You guys know this one.
Not this. False.
Stasis. It's not your favorite? No, I don't, it was never my favorite either, but it's really important. You guys need to know, so. All right, let me, we're going to do a case study.
Hey, Ms. Davis, are we going to do any, I noticed it wasn't a section, or a couple of us noticed it wasn't a section on oxygenation.
We, I did not do one for oxygenation. I just, we did this one on homeostasis. Because I thought that homeostasis was more of a struggle for you guys.
Oh, okay, okay.
But that will be on the test, though, right?
Oh, yeah, oxygenation and homeostasis. Yep. And we're going to talk about a few things. All right, so we're going to talk about this case study. So can you guys see my screen? Wait a minute. Let me move it over here. Hold on. Oh, God. Can you see that now? Yes, okay. All right, so for this case study, Joe Parker is your patient. He is a seventy-two-year-old male. Who has been brought to the emergency room by his wife for mild confusion and severe weakness. His wife states that he has been vomiting and having diarrhea for four days. She states that he has progressively gotten worse, and today he had a lot of difficulty walking from the bedroom to the bathroom. She states that he reports the need to urinate frequently, but states he isn't drinking a whole lot. His appetite is very poor, and he is refusing to drink or eat anything out of fear of having diarrhea or vomiting. The ER nurse asked the patient about his present symptoms. He reports. That his mouth is very dry, his legs feel weak, they're crampy with occasional numbness and tingling, and sometimes he feels his heart fluttering. His past medical history, he has hypertension, high cholesterol, and enlarged prostate, chest pain, heartburn, and arthritis. He takes medications every day of lisinopril with H C T Z, hydrochlorothiazide. He takes Simba fat, Simba, Vastatin, Hytrin, Prilosec, Nitro Patch, and glucosamine. Upon your further assessment, the nurse obtains the following vitals: blood pressure, ninety-two over fifty-five, heart rate one-ten, temperature thirty-seven point five, oxygen ninety-eight on room air, and respirations of twenty-four. The patient has bilateral lower extremity weakness. Reported, you, you think it's about a four out of five. Respirations are shallow and elevated. Patient is alert and oriented to himself and his date of birth. He is unsure of the date or where he is. His labs were performed and just resulted sodium one forty-six, potassium three point two, calcium nine point zero, phosphorus two point five eight, and magnesium one point two. So let's go back to the very beginning, and let's start breaking this down and try and see if we can figure out what's going on with the patient. What his abnormalities are, and then what implementations that we would do for this patient. So what are the abnormalities that we talked about in the case study on the first page here? What are the not normals?
Or has hypokalemia, right, because he dehydrated.
Okay, so you think he has hypocalemia, okay?
Folemia, like, because.
I'm sorry, okay. All right, so let's go back to this first page here that I have up. What in this case study that we just, that I just read off to you, what are your abnormals?
And severe weakness.
Yep, severe weakness. Somebody said something else I couldn't hear.
Drinking, anything?
Yes, so the patient's not drinking.
Occasional numbness, numbness and tingling?
Vomiting, diarrhea.
Vomiting. Okay, so let's, so let's just look at the vomiting, the diarrhea. He isn't drinking a lot because he's afraid of having more vomiting and diarrhea, which is something that's very common in patients. So if we just look at those couple things, the vomiting, the diarrhea times four days, and then him stating that he's not taking anything in, what's the first thing that comes to your mind?
Dehydration.
Okay, dehydration. What kind of issues could we see? We, what, okay, so if we're dehydrated, what is happening with our circulating blood volume in our body?
It's low.
Yeah. It's going to be low.
And that's true.
Hypovolemia. We can have hypo what?
I found that term.
You can have hyponatremia. What else can we have? What other electrolyte issue?
Metabolic alkalosis.
Well, right now, let's just look, let's just see what electrolyte imbalance we, or what electrolyte imbalance are we concerned about?
Potassium.
Potassium.
Okay, so why is potassium? Why are we worried about it?
This is vomiting, and it's lost through vomiting and feces, right?
More so through your.
I read in the notes that when sodium goes down, potassium goes up. Is that true?
Hmm, it can.
But not always.
Not always.
Okay.
Um, because they're both, are they both extracellular fluids?
No.
What is, where is our potassium at?
Yeah, I thought potassium was.
Potassium is intracellular.
Okay, where is the sodium?
And the sodium.
Okay, so it just depends on how much. And I hate saying this stuff, because I don't want to confuse you guys. So sometimes when we have dehydration. And so much water leaves, it depends on what's leaving, if it's just volume or if it's water. If there's a lot of water that's coming out, then your sodium is going to be higher because left behind, okay? So it just, that's like the other end of the spectrum that I don't want to talk about, and I know you guys are critically thinking, which I appreciate, but I don't want to throw you off and make you think differently. So it just depends on what we're losing. Are we losing volume? If we're just, if we're losing volume, it's going to be hypovolemia, hyponatremia. If we're just losing water, if all that water is coming out. Then we can have hypernatremia, because when we pull all the water, all that stays in the cell is that sodium.
What's the difference between?
In this case, the, 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 the sodium is high. Because if you look at the lab results, it's high, well, like, one.
Slightly.
Yeah, slightly, yes.
We haven't gotten to that part yet, but yes, it's slightly high, which we would see if the potassium was coming down, then you could see your potassium go up slightly.
What's the difference in losing? I thought losing fluid was losing. If you lost the fluid, it may, it kept the sodium, and so you had high, hypernatremia. What's the difference in the fluid you're talking about?
Well, that's why I didn't want it, but somebody asked that, so I had to talk about it. It depends. Sometimes you're just losing fluid, you're losing everything, you're losing all your volume. Sometimes you just lose water. If the water is the only thing that comes out, then you're going to have the hypernatremia.
Okay. But I just want to add, he's also on diuretics as well. So if he's taking those diuretics and not drinking, he's still losing the potassium level, because I. I think those are not potassium, I might be wrong.
Potassium's there.
This potassium isn't that low, though.
It's low, three point two.
That's low.
Yeah, it's three point five to five is normal, so with potassium.
I noticed low, it's not that low, like.
Right, but if he's still drinking, if he's not drinking and everything, and he's on those diuretics.
Yeah.
And stuff, it could help add to that.
Yes, and Tazra, with potassium, that is really low, because of the effects that it has on the heart. So when you see a number like that, you want to think, okay, yeah, we, we need to do something. Even though it's not that far off from the normal, it's good, because of the damage that it can cause, that is a significantly low number for potassium. Okay?
And did we say we had low blood volume?
Well, did we? What do we have? So if we have, yes, so if our patient is not drinking. Getting rid of all their volume, they're, they're, they're having diarrhea, they're vomiting. Then we're going to have a decreased circulating volume, so he is dehydrated.
So does, would that involve his oxygenation because of the perfusion? It talks about his breathing.
It could. It just depends on how far things go. So what, what is his respiratory, so we haven't gotten that far yet. We're still on the first page. We're still talking about things.
Okay.
So we said that we believe that he's dehydrated. Hypovolemia, he could have hyponatremia and low potassium. What other things in this? This case study leads you to a particular potassium, I mean, a particular electrolyte imbalance?
A medical history of hypertension, high cholesterol, heartburn, chest pain.
I say very crampy and.
The numbness and tingling.
Okay.
With the heart fluttering.
Yes.
And they're both.
Yes. So numbness and tingling, heart fluttering, what electrolyte imbalance do we see those symptoms in?
Potassium.
Yes, potassium. So you need to be able to pick out those key things, okay? So he has numbness and tingling in his extremities. He feels very crampy, and he feels weak. Those are all signs of hypocalemia. So now we're starting to think, okay, he's dehydrated, we have some hypovolemia, maybe some hyponatremia, but now we really think, oh, this guy has hypocalemia. Because of these side effects that we're starting to see. Patients that have palpitations and heart irregular, you know, irregular things going on, they will report it like their heart is fluttering, that's what they say. Or they might even say palpitations if they've had palpitations before. So if we look at his medication, like Kelsey said. That lisinopril is a blood pressure medicine, but it also has a diuretic attached to it. So there is a component to that medication that is going to pull fluid out. So he is getting hit with probably this stomach virus that he has. He's vomiting and having diarrhea. Then he's not drinking, so he's even, we're even making it even worse, and he's also taking this medication, which is going to reduce his circulating volume, bring down his blood pressure, and. Cause that loss of potassium, okay? So very good, you guys are on the right track. So let's go over to. And he also said here that he. He got worse today. He has mild confusion, mild confusion. We see confusion in hypocalia, that's another side effect. So when we look at his vital signs, what's going on with his blood pressure?
Low.
Low. Yes, he has low circulating volume. He's dehydrated. This is an expected finding of dehydration, hypovolemia. What's his heart rate?
High.
Why is it high? What's happening? Very good. It's compensating, because there's not enough blood circulating. The heart's like, oh, my God, I got to pump more. We got to get more blood out. We don't have enough. What's his temperature?
High.
What's a normal, what's a normal temperature? Okay, or thirty-six point five, right? This is like a baseline. So this is a temperature you would want to monitor. This is what we call a low-grade fever. It's not normal, but it's not a hundred point four. How's his oxygen?
Okay.
Normal. And what's his respiratory status like?
Yeah.
Yes, and then the nurse says that he has bilateral weakness that coincides with the hypocalemia. His respirations are shallow and elevated. That is a side effect of hypocalemia. Confusion, another symptom of hypocalemia. And he has that as well. So now let's look at his labs. So what do we think about his sodium?
Slightly high.
A little high.
Slightly high, could be normal, might be where he lives. What about, what about his potassium?
Slightly low.
Low.
Yep. What do we think about the calcium?
Normal.
Yeah. What about the phosphorus?
Normal.
Normal.
And magnesium? Normal, very good. All right, so we know the potassium is off. And we know the sodium is a tiny bit off, but we're really concerned about the potassium, so we know he has hypocalemia. Because of all the symptoms that he's exhibiting, all of the findings that the nurse found, and then looking at this potassium. So what do we want to do for this patient? How do we want to support him? What can we do?
Give him every.
Fluid.
Hypotonic fluids, yes. So what kind of fluids can we give? Name two.
Oh, point four five.
Half-normal saline and then.
Then D, yep. D five W with the. D five W with the.
Not D five W.
Five W. Nope, not D five W.
W, that, that's isotonic, I think it was hypertonic.
Could you give that?
Is it like?
Half percent saline?
So we could, you could give an isotonic in this case. In the hospital setting, you would probably see. Um, normal saline or lactated ringers with some kind of potassium in it, just because they're easy go-tos. What would we want to do for this patient? What, what type of nursing interventions would we want to do? What's the first thing? To be on a heart monitor. He, what else do we want to do? A baseline, what?
Vitals.
Weight.
Vitals. Yes, weight, eyes and nose. We want to monitor eyes and nose, strict eyes and nose every four hours. We want to get a baseline EKG. Because we want to see if there's any change in that EKG, okay? Because now he has this electrolyte disturbance. Um, what kind of potassium, potassium replacements can we give?
Would you do in this case or no? Or is that a fine line?
Would we do what?
The insulin? To push the, oh, no, you're right. Sorry. It's the opposite. You wanted out. Nevermind. Disregard.
Would you give, would you give anti-miatic? To get rid of the, to stop the, I don't know if I'm saying the word right, but to stop the vomiting?
Yes, very good. Who said that? DeShawna? Chanel, very good. Yes, because we know the patient, we have to stop the problem. We have to fix what's going on, right? So we have to find out what's causing the vomiting and the diarrhea. A lot of times you'll see with patients that have stomach. Um, issues like this, and then you bring them in. Once you give them like a, a big intake of fluid, sometimes for some reason that just resolves it. And that nausea and the vomiting and the diarrhea seems to subside. Usually that's pretty helpful. If not, then we have to give, like Chanel said, antimetics to keep her from vomiting, to stop the cycle from going on. Um, we could give, um, anti-diarrhea medicine, right, to help stop the diarrhea. And then we're going to give those, um, IV fluids. We could also give them, what kind of meta, what kind of medications would we give them to fix the potassium?
Maybe potassium chloride?
Very good. Potassium chloride. There's a couple of different types there. So, um, your, your, um. Your lecture, we talked about K light, K tabs, slow K, K dur, those are just some micro K, those are some of the brands. You could also have an IV infusion, not an IV push, but an IV infusion of potassium. Depending on how low it is and how much of a bump the doctor wants to give. We tend to give to patients who are on potassium. I mean, who are on diuretics a little bit more because we're kind of anticipating that drop again. Um, because of the, um, diuretic that they're on. So sometimes we give them a little bit to bump them up a little bit over because we know it's going to drop down.
Ms. Davis, what, what IV did you end up saying? You said oh, point four five?
No. What type of, what type of IV fluid is zero point four five?
Hypo.
Hypotonic.
What kind of?
Will we give hypotonic solution?
We would give a hypotonic solution. Yes, you guys have me confused. So many people are saying so many different things. And I said that we could give a, um, you could give an isotonic. Because that's going to, um, it's going to replace the volume. Okay? So, and then you could give, yes, you could give the zero point four five. Um, you could give the, you could just see, um. Usually you're going to see with potassium issues, you're going to see like a D five with twenty of K or, um. A D five with forty of K, because we also can use that to bump up their K. So you're going to see that additive. Sometimes in the hospital, you will also see, um. Lactated ringers with twenty of K, because again, it's not going to cause any shift. It's going to increase the volume. So that is a choice that you will see sometimes when you go into the clinical setting. So I don't want you to be like, well, it's isotonic. Why would we give it? Well, because it replaces your fluid. And it's not going to shift anywhere because it's isotonic. So you might see that when you guys are in clinical.
So then you could give D five W.
You could. You're going to, if you see it in the clinical setting, it's probably not going to be by itself. Less, you would see that if they were diabetic. So if they had diabetes and they weren't taking anything in and there we were running the risk of having their, um, blood sugar dropped. Um, then you might see that D five. There's a lot of different things that you guys are going to see in the clinical setting. You're going to wait, you're going to be like, wait, that's not what I learned. Cause there's always an exception to the, you know what I mean? There's always an exception to what the disease process is, to whatever else the patient has going on. Okay, so we are going to do that baseline EKG. We're going to do daily weights. Because what are we, we're going to give them IV fluids. So what are we want to be, um. We, what do we want to try avoid happening when we're giving them IV fluids?
Over volume, like hypovalemia?
Oh, yes, we always run the risk of causing the opposite problem. So we want to make sure that they're not gaining weight. How else can we make sure besides daily weights and strict eyes and nose? What else is a great indicator that they are fluid overloaded? What part of your physical assessment?
Edema?
Yes, edema, um, checking those pulses to see if they're bounding. Um, so we are going to be monitoring their electrolytes, right? We're going to make sure that what we're doing is helping. So we want to see an improvement in that potassium. Oral potassium takes a while to see a bump and a, and a lot of it to see a bump. So usually we give the IV, um, the aliquots of, um, IV potassium first to get what we want. Because it'll work sooner. And then when we get them where we want, then we can give them the PO medication. Or if it's not that far off, if it's like three point four or just at three point five, they will give them the PO medication.
Okay, so I have a question about that. He was, he was afraid to drink. Uh, and eat because he didn't want to vomit. So would it be better to give him the IV medications? Even though his potassium wasn't that low, like, and I know that potassium pills are humongous.
Yes. Who is that? Chanelle?
Yes.
Yes, good thinking, absolutely. Because if he's already nauseated, we can give him an antiemetic, but it doesn't mean he's going to keep anything down. So whenever your patient is vomiting, you want to try and switch as many of their medications over as you can to, um, IV. Yeah, and some of them you would just hold if they weren't really important ones, obviously, um, until they were feeling better. I was going to say something to you. What did you, what did you just say again? Tell me what you said again. Oh, yes. So you said that that's not that bad, the potassium. I don't want you to think that it's not that bad. Three point two is significantly low. Probably would not see a bump in your potassium with just the oral. You would need IV. Because even though it's not far from the three point five, it is a, it is a significantly low potassium. That is a, a low number that we would automatically do something about pretty quickly. And you would, those heart issues.
Oh, Miss Davis, I have a question as far as the potassium. I know the normal range is three point five to five point three, but one of the, um. One of the, yeah, answers, or I don't, I don't know who made it. One of the answers on the Jeopardy said potassium three point one to five point one. And then you say, or it can be five point thirty. But since you say how serious potassium is, it's kind of like, what is the range we're looking at for the exam purpose?
So the range for the exam purpose would be three point five to five point, I think your PowerPoint says five point three.
Okay.
What I really see like in the hospital setting is three point five to five, three point five to five, three point five. To five point three each facility, but for testing, I would do the three point five to five point three, since that's, isn't that what's on your slide? Let me.
Yes, that's.
Yes, go by the slide.
And to piggyback off of Tazza real quick, um, with the, with the potassium. Um, on that same slide, that same set of slides, you know, with three point five to five point three. And then a couple of slides down, it says hyper is five point oh and up. So are we going by the five point three?
Well, I wouldn't give you anything that close.
Okay, that's fine, okay.
So like where I work, that five would be considered high. It would be right there on the cusp. We would probably give them something. So you will see that in the clinical setting. That's why I put that. But I would never give you something that was between five and five point three. That would be. Now, it would be a much more difference in the range for sure. Yeah, I wouldn't try and trick you. But I just want you guys to be aware that when you go into the clinical setting, you're going to see different things. And you're going to see different doctors that are very aggressively treating things and some that aren't aggressively treating things, depending on other issues that are going along with the patient. So there's a lot of things that factor into it. All right, so. We're going to do the strict eyes and nose, um. Monitor for diarrhea. Very good. All right, and let me see here. I did have one question on here. All right, a sixty eight year old patient has been NPO. Receiving normal saline at seventy five mls per hour and has a nasal, nasogastric tube to low intermittent suction. The client is now experiencing an altered level of consciousness. Which assessment needs to be reported to the physician? Greenish liquid from the NG tube, a magnesium level of two point oh, sodium level of one thirty two. And a weight gain of three pounds over four days.
Weight gain.
So look at the question again. Before you even look at any of your answers. What do you think could be happening with this patient? Don't even look at your answers. I want to know what condition you think they're at risk for developing? They're NPO.
Pneumonia.
Okay, so.
I would say pneumonia.
No.
Dehydration because they're NPO? No, because they're getting a fluid, so not that.
Well, they're NPO, but then they're also getting the suction. They're getting the intermittent suction. Way, and their conscious level is decreasing.
Yes. Yes, so they are getting that little bit of fluid, but we're continuously, um, doing, we're getting suction from that nasogastric tube. They've been NPO. That seventy five mls might not be enough. And now they're having an altered level of consciousness. So this patient is not going to have any type of fluid overload. Okay, he doesn't have bounding, we're not saying bounding pulses and advantageous lung sounds, crackles, things like that. We're saying all things that can cause dehydration and a low. Okay, so that's the first thing you need to do. Before you even read your answers, try and figure out, well, what do you think this patient is at risk for? Because then you can get rid of all these answers that wouldn't have anything to do with that. So would you see a weight gain of three pounds over four days with a patient that has dehydration?
No, that's why it would be something to report.
No, you wouldn't. Three pounds over four days, that's not a whole lot. When we talk about one to two pounds like in twenty four hours, over four days. We're not concerned about that. Um, a greenish liquid from the NG tube?
That's bow, it happened.
It's normal. That's what you're going to, you might see that coming out of there. How about a magnesium level of two? What about a sodium level of one? Yes, that would be low. Do you want to call your doctor and tell him that that sodium is low and now your patient is, um, has an altered level of consciousness? Absolutely.
So would that mean that he, that this patient is having dehydration or like?
It's dehydration, but it's hyponatremia. The sodium is low.
Okay.
Yep.
So Ms. Davis, when you say the one thirty two is low, I remember from like clinical when I would. Would say something to the nurse about stuff like that and they will be like, oh, that's not that big. So in like the, the, the real, and, and, and at work or something like that, would that really be considered to be alarming? Or just for textbook purposes?
So it is low and it could be very alarming for one person, but not so alarming for another. I've seen people that live at one twenty eight. Which to me is alarming. And I've seen patients that have had one twenty nine that are on death's door. So it just depends, the patient, other comorbidities they have, the, you know, it just, there's a lot of patient factors that go into that. You have to treat it kind of on an individual basis.
Okay.
Yep, um, so that patient that she was talking about, maybe that was normal for them. Maybe they were, maybe that's where they normally hover. Between one thirty two and one thirty four, who knows? But it's an individual basis. But the thing about this question is that you know that they're at risk for some kind of dehydration. And now you see that low sodium level. So you know they have hyponatremia and the fact that they have an altered level of consciousness, that is a problem. Okay? So you would not get fluid, well, you could get fluid overload from NPO, but if they were giving you fluids for a long time. But it's very easy to overthink things. I don't want you guys to do that.
Yeah, that's what I do.
All right, so let's talk about some other things that I want you to know for this. Was that case study helpful for you guys?
No.
What?
Yes.
Who said that?
Me. It was me because I'm just confused. Like all of this stuff is just confusing.
It is, sorry.
Okay. All right, well, at least you're honest. There's that. I appreciate your honesty. It is confusing.
I mean, it definitely helps me to think about it and look at certain symptoms. But it's just like hypertonic versus isotonic versus hypertonic fluid. And then what is, what should I look at versus vitamin K? I mean, potassium versus sodium versus the, it's just a lot. That's all.
Okay, so for testing purposes, you should look on your paper for those fluids. How I have them categorized. I talked about other things that you would see in the clinical setting because you're going to see them in the clinical setting. And I don't want you to be like, that's wrong, that's not normal. There's always an exception to the rule. And some providers just like to use certain things which, which do help the problem. If you use an isotonic. Fluid is going to help increase that volume, because it's not going to cause a fluid shift. And if they're dehydrated, it'll work. But for testing purposes, that's not what I want you to think of. But somebody asked a question, so I had to address it. And if you see it in the clinical setting, you're going to be like, why are they getting that fluid? Why wouldn't they get this? So I want you to understand, you know, for testing purposes, we're talking about, you know, we do talk about evidence-based practice and things that we can see. But there's always going to be other things that you're going to see in the clinical setting. And I want you guys to be aware of that so that you're not caught off guard. So let's see. Give me just a second here. I'm looking at my information. Okay. So. All over the place here. So when you think of potassium issues, I want you to think of ECG changes, heart rate, rhythm, patterns, things like that. When you think of hyponatremia, you're going to think of nausea and vomiting, stupor, coma. Tendon, deep tendon reflexes being decreased, lymph muscle weakness. Uh, we will have that with potassium too. And I wouldn't give you the same. You know, that you would be able to discern based upon the questions, based upon the symptoms that I'm giving you. I wouldn't make it so similar that you would have to choose between potassium and, and sodium. It would be. You would, it would, should be easy if you know what's going on to discern what the problem is. Okay, they're not going to be so close together that you would not be able to do that. Let's see. So you need to know the loads of your lungs where you would assess certain things, okay? You need to know that for your test. You need to know about your chest tubes. We talked about them. Um, you need to, I, you need to know what would be an issue with a chest tube. Um, you need to, I, you need to know what would be an issue with a chest tube and what you would do to fix that issue. Okay, we talked about that. There are going to be dosage on there. Um, you definitely need to know about, um, let's see. Um, the, what foods could be recommended that are high in potassium for you to talk to your patients about? You need to know that. Um, let's see. You need to know about your compensatory mechanism. So we talked about that cardiac hormone, the atrial natriuretic peptide, what that does, what it's going to do um, in your system. You need to know about that. Um, you need to know emphysema and the side effects you would see with emphysema. You know, you have to know about your ABGs. You guys are doing good on that. Make sure you know all your lab values for all your, the appropriate normal levels for your electrolytes. You guys definitely need to know about TB. So side effects of treatments, um, why they have, they are not compliant with our medications, testings, um, what kind of tests you would do? What are the signs and symptoms of tuberculosis? You guys need to know that.
Ms. Davis, I have a question.
Huh? Yes.
Um, do, do we need to know about the medications?
Yes, any medications that we talked about are fair game. You can see them on the test.
Do we need to know the, for, um?
The what?
Do we need to, uh, I know, I, nevermind.
Okay. Um, we talked about one of the things we could do for a patient that had high potassium. We could give them an enema of sodium, um, polyethylene. Do you guys remember what that does? We talked about that. You guys need to know what that enema is going to do, how it helps with um, decreasing potassium levels. So if you had a patient who had an overdose um, from um, the use of taking opioids, they took too many. What type of um, acid-base imbalance do you think you would see with someone who had um, an overdose?
Respiratory.
Respiratory acidosis, yep. So remember, your PACO2 is always going to be your respiratory issues. Your HCO3 is always going to be your metabolic issues, vomiting, diarrhea, kidney issues, okay? Things like that. Know your fluids. Know your signs of fluid overload. Dehydration, we've talked about that. So when you think of a low sodium level, you should automatically think of altered level of consciousness. And that's the big take-home thing. So if you are thinking potassium, you're thinking heart, heart rhythms, heart abnormalities, dysrhythmias, palpitations, heart, heart, heart. Sodium, low sodium is going to be um, level, altered level of consciousness. Um, you need to know your pneumothoraxes, the difference between them, what signs and symptoms you would see.
Ms. Davis, say that again, signs and symptoms of what?
Um, your um, pneumothoraxes. The different ones. Um.
Push it over here.
All right. So if you have a patient who has some type of respiratory issue, um, it doesn't really matter what's causing it. If they are starting to have issues with their respiratory system and their oxygenation is declining, what is the first thing that you would do if you're prioritizing your care? You need to call the doctors.
Put on oxygen.
Yes, put on oxygen. Then what would you do after you put on oxygen?
Doc, notify the doctor.
Yes, put on oxygen, call the doctor. Then what else could we do with the patient to try and increase their oxygen intake in the bed? What can we do with them while they're in the bed? Yeah.
Put him in a semi foul position, sit him up some.
Yeah, at a forty-five degree Igo is good. You always want to make sure you guys have suctioning in the room, okay? That's considered emergency equipment. If somebody's having a respiratory issue, you need to have suctioning in the room. Um, yeah, you definitely need to know about those chest tubes. Couple of questions about them. You need to see, you need to know about your COPD patients, things that, preventative things that we need to do for them to keep them from having exacerbations and um, getting illnesses that can cause any kind of complication with their respiratory status. You want to make sure they're getting their vaccines. We talked about that. You guys also need to know what is going on with chronic obstructive pulmonary disease? What is the pathophysiology behind it? What's happening? Um, what's happening with their oxygen? What is happening with their carbon dioxide? You guys need to know that. And remember, I told you guys, you need to know all of your oxygen. Um, your, the different types of um, things that you can use to administer oxygen and what those values are. Like, you know, how high they go up. And remember, in that COPD patient, you never want to give them more than um, like the three or the four liters because then you're going to change that drive for them to breathe. If they already, they already breathe regularly at a lower oxygen level. So we don't want to cause it to be worse. All right, I think that's all I have for you guys.